I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to Celebrations, Mr. Grabat.
Good evening. It's quite a night, it's quite a couple of weeks here in the district. First up tonight, we have several of our retirees with us. I appreciate everyone who's come out to their receptions the last couple of weeks. Mr. Mapes has been putting out feature stories on each person and trying to get stories shared from their time here. Those who are here tonight come up with me so I can see everybody that's made it.
We just had Ms. Stevens' retirement reception at the high school this afternoon. She joined us six years ago, asylum, unbelievable high school counselor. Ms. Ray has been a sixth grade teacher of the district the last few years and was also our middle school teacher of the year, so we'll have to find another reason for her to come in June. And then in the middle, everyone knows, one of our longest-serving teachers at Glen Duffy, after thirty-five years, is Ange Gendberg.
I'm wondering a little bit about each of you about what plans going forward and people trying to reflect.
Retirement's come with speeches, that's just how it is.
Well, I have four grandchildren and my daughter found out last week she's expecting twins, so I'm gonna be really busy. And I'm gonna be checking on my high school counselors and staff, just make sure they're still doing their jobs, so.
Congratulations, that is cool.
Thank you, Lisa.
Grandparents are best.
I am just gonna go work somewhere else.
I'm hoping to have grandchildren, Amanda. I know you're watching this and listening. I'm ready to be a nana. So I'm hoping to have grandchildren to get to watch.
Yeah.
Good for you.
Well, my son is gonna get married in October, so I'm gonna fall on that, only I'm gonna be a nanny instead of a nana. And I've already had my church, two different people call me today for committee, so I'm gonna be busy.
Thank you, ladies, so much.
Thank you, ladies.
Next, our classified staff of the year. We put surveys out to the community, to the schools, parents, kids, about a month back. We'll have the principals come up and help present those, and then we'll have those ladies take a photo with Ms. Holland behind me. First up for Glen Duffy is Holly Kleber. Upper elementary is Bethany Pitts. For Grabat Middle School is Molly Schreiber. For Grabat High School is Nurse Amy Jackson. We are blessed to have so many great employees on all jobs. It takes a small village to run a school district and we appreciate contributions of all staff members this year. The last couple of weeks especially with, from graduation to kindergarten graduation to athletic banquet, scholarship night, all the local organizations that supported scholarships for seniors, you heard of graduation. We had over $2 million worth of scholarships. And then the parents in the PTO was running field days and buddy day and all the community members that came out for the Grabat Middle School Career Fair was phenomenal event. So just very thankful that we have the level of support we have. Our last one tonight, Ms. Schaefer's going to come up and talk some to our students. If you remember, made the state science fair this year. She has some students with her to share some of their learnings this year.
So this is just a small delegation of students who participated in science fair this year. We had 150 who participate locally. We took 36 to regionals at the University of Arkansas. And then from there, we had 12 who went to state at UCA. And there, at both places, regionals and state, just very successful. We're so proud of the entire group that participated and came away, among other things, the fifth place school in the state. All divisions, all levels. So we were very, very excited.
Ms. Kudrowski, do you want to add to that? Yes, so we had three people placed in first through third. Michael Bassing, or fourth through third, fourth, first through fourth, sorry. Michael Bassing, fourth in his category.
Math.
In math. And Kate Porta, fourth in, third in physics?
Yes.
And then Wyatt Fisher, our freshman here, who took first in electrical engineering. So it was a big, Wyatt came home with a bunch of awards. Tell them all the awards, because I remember all the names.
I got one for naming and moving technology.
Yes.
And then fourth place and then.
Art, the math and science school gets an award.
For the summer camp.
Yeah, and he won that also, so.
Can you tell us about your project?
I did ionic wind. So what just happens is it creates airflow, like how a fan works, by just electricity. So it doesn't have any mechanical movement, just electricity.
So they're really looking at using this in space, because it wouldn't be affected by the elements.
Awesome. What inspired you to do that?
I guess I watched a little, a couple YouTube videos and sawing this on the web was like, that's kind of interesting. So I wanted to test it for myself.
And Ms. Kudrowski saying, hey, we're all gonna do a science fair project. And we also want to recognize, Ms. Kudrowski was named the regional science fair teacher of the year for our region. And all of these guys here, they had to win at Fayetteville to go on to state. And then for the fifth place prize, that's everybody's scores from our school average against every other school. And so the schools we were up against were Little Rock Central, the math and science school, Alma, which is always a powerhouse science fair school. And so those are the kind of competition that these guys competed against and, and won against at state. So really exciting. Garrett, he won at Fayetteville, competed great at state, and he went on with his science fair project to state FFA, where you can also do agri fair with the same projects, which we love, and he won there. So his will be going to compete at nationals for FFA.
Way to go, Garrett.
How about everybody say who they are and what your project was?
I guess I'm Calvin Byrd. My project was like how different shapes of building affect how much weight they can hold. You are Calvin Byrd.
Wyatt Fisher, and I did ionic wind.
Garrett Haley, and I did wish for it to surround other good next average daily game. We summer fielded, me and Sherrod both did how wing shape affects aircraft's performance.
What grade are you guys in?
Freshman.
Freshman.
Tenth grade.
Freshman.
Freshman.
Wow.
Very impressive. Way to go, gentlemen. Way to go, teachers too. That is very impressive, very impressive.
Well, we already got a major profession coming up, so we're gonna judge more projects.
They may be calling you to judge science fair, but call you. And that was really great. At our local science fair, we were able to get volunteers from just all different science fields and non-science fields to come in and judge for us. So we had doctors and veterinarians and pharmacists and engineers and mathematicians and teachers. So that's who helped choose these kids to go on and do so well. So we're proud of that, too.
Very good.
Awesome.
Well, thanks for having me. Those are all the great parents that survived.
Yes, exactly. I don't know, it's all very similar. I want to acknowledge the work Mr. Cawsdale did on the board. Great father in this community, did a lot of great work for our school board. And I want to congratulate Ms. Madison on winning her seat and being her first board meeting tonight.
Is Matt back there or something? I think it's worth noting, you know, Matt, I think the cut above award that we get to give out was Matt's brainchild. It really is an honor to be able to do that and it's impactful more in the schools and the teachers receive that. So really kudos to Matt for spearheading that and making sure that got done.
Okay, we've got public comment, two people. Amber Jenkins, welcome.
Can I move this? I see a few familiar faces here. Most I know don't know me, so. My name is Amber Jenkins, mother of recent graduate Tassi Benevente and incoming junior Matuwa Benevente. We moved here four years ago and I just want to say, of all the places we could have moved in this great country, we chose Grabat. It's been one of the best decisions of our lives and we love this community more than I can say. I wish I could go back in time and raise them from birth here. It's a wonderful place. I want to acknowledge and thank everyone in this room that's helped make Grabat what it is today and for welcoming my family to this community four years ago. We appreciate you and we love you. Due to my work schedule, I have not attended a school board meeting before, even the ones that my boys attended as back-to-back state wrestling champs. I know that our district has been in good hands and I've never felt the need to speak. Today I come representing my wrestlers, our family, the wrestling community, including our beloved coaches. When I heard that Coach Weller was instructed not to show up at the athletics banquet in any capacity, I was shocked. Even when Coach Weller clarified he would never attempt to hand out any awards or try to represent any of these teams as in the capacity of a coach, he was still refused entry. He was told to leave or he would be arrested for trespassing. This was a mistake by those that made that decision and I'm here to say that it was a mistake. Someone with intimate knowledge of recent occurrences, who might even be in this room, went on Facebook anonymously to try to tarnish Coach Weller's reputation and I'm here to set that right. Yes, as the anonymous Facebook poster said, Coach Weller violated his contract, but as a former teacher of Coach Weller's two daughters, I know him in the capacity of a father and a husband. I know as a great coach, as he is, his first ministry is to his family. I'm sorry that the district cannot accommodate Coach Weller's priority, forcing him into a position where he violated his contract. We disagreed with the district decisions, but we respected Coach Weller's decision. The anonymous Facebook poster compared the school to a business and talked about how businesses run. I argue that is also wrong. Businesses do what is good for businesses. Schools do what is best for the children that attend there or are supposed to anyway. Coach Weller has been faithful to his family, to his teams, to this community, to my boys. He deserves the same faithfulness from us. It is too late to go back and change what has already been done, but it is not too late for the people in this room to try to correct it. He is owed an apology. To me, this is my opinion, it sounds like the egos involved may not leave room for an apology to be said, but an apology is still owed. It is too late to salvage the amazing wrestling program that we all witnessed warm over the last four years, leading to back-to-back state wrestling championships. It is too late to correct the loss of Coach Herline and in turn the loss of Coach BJ and Coach Greg. Our beloved program has been wiped out. Our family has grieved the loss of this program that should have been respected and protected by everyone in this room. It should have been as dear to all of you as it is to us. And I don't think there's anything that you can say to make me understand your decisions that have rippled through this community, bringing me here before you. It is too late for so much, but I urge anyone that loved our program as much as me to do what you can to try to right these wrongs whatever way you can. Thank you for your time and I will pray that you will make better decisions moving forward.
Thank you.
Ms. Nichols?
I kind of feel like now I'm getting tired of sitting up here, but please know that I'm just as tired of being up here. Coach Herline isn't stepping away from this district, like Ms. Jenkins was just talking about, for a huge race or bigger title. In fact, he's leaving a head coaching position to take an assistant spot elsewhere. He's not chasing prestige, he's walking away because he no longer feels that he has the support needed to help the wrestling program continue to grow and succeed. And that's something that everybody should take notice of. This is a man who has poured himself into our schools, coaching athletes to regional and state success, developing scholarship-level competitors and shaping character. His athletes leave more focused, more accountable and more prepared for life, because that's what coaches do. They build people, not just successful teams. Coach Herline is also a respected classroom teacher. For years, GMS has posted solid scores and he's been a part of that success. That kind of dual success is hard to find in a coach and a classroom teacher. Coaches Weller and Herline aren't the only great educators who left Grabat, but their proven records and strong reputations should give us all pause. It's easy to tell ourselves that we did everything we could to allow ourselves to become complacent in the belief that we'll always lose great educators to the bigger districts, but I would suggest otherwise. Grabat has something powerful, a close-knit community that many families actively choose. We can attract and retain great educators the same way, by being a district where people are seen, supported and genuinely valued. But value is shown in more than words. It's shown in how we treat people, especially in the tough moments. I believe that deciding Coach Weller couldn't attend the athletic banquet earlier this week was the wrong call. He wanted to support the athletes the way he has from the stands at other events. Instead, that decision stirred more drama than his presence would have. It shifted focus away from the kids and made it harder for those still in the programs to feel supported. And more than anything, it lacked professionalism and respect that our students need to see modeled from the adults in this district. As I said in March, we can't change the past and we won't keep every good educator. But it's the responsibility of district leadership and this board to protect the district culture going forward. These kids and our staff deserve the best that we have to give and this community deserves leaders willing to listen, reflect and act before we lose others who would hope to plant roots here and help us grow. My time appears limited and so is my ability to think clearly in front of my microphone. I don't know how each of you feels about what I've said tonight. You might be wishing I sat down two and a half minutes ago or you might want to continue the conversation. Either way, you all have my email address. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Melanie.
We have four items to add to the agenda. I'm going to, I'm going to read the item and the letter that it's supposed to be associated with and then that's gonna be the motion. And then second, we'll vote on to add it to the agenda, okay? I'm gonna add all of these to the personnel recommendations. Nine I will be the resignation of Dusty Larson. Nine J, somebody check me in action. Nine J is the retirement of Ms. Hamilton. Nine K is the resignation of Ms. Rundling. As well as the, we're going to add school choice application summary to the consent agenda, because I think that's where we usually have that. That's the motion.
Still moved.
Say again.
Any discussion on that, corrections? Others in favor say aye. Any opposed? Calendar, are we still on for a second, a June 2nd meeting or TBD or?
It'll be limited, but we will have some hires that evening. It may be a short meeting, but, and we will try our best by the calendar. Ms. Mayo would be working on packet tomorrow. We're off Memorial Day, so that one will definitely be probably Thursday, the 29th, possibly, yeah, we hope. But we're also trying to hire, so.
Yeah, we get that.
You'll see maybe some additions that night as well, if we get anybody in cleared out that Monday.
Anything else wanting to talk about the calendar?
I clarify for the public that even with the storm getting out early, we have just enough minutes in. So Tuesday is not a fast Friday day. It's Tuesday, we need all of those minutes to get in, so.
Sure, everybody is here. Consent agenda?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Motion on the second, any discussion? Others in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, superintendent's report?
I have an update on construction. Crossland has been meeting with Build. They've settled in on a block style, probably being our best option to keep the style of the building. Not much cost increase there, maybe $20,000 to $30,000, so it'll keep the integrity of the end of the building looking the same. You can see in the maintenance and transportation, there's a lot of summer projects right now that we're getting ready for. The roof is on pace to bid. Our bond sale for the construction at GHS next year is the first week of June. We should have that money in the district by June 30th and then we'll start making construction payments probably in October. Waiting for Crossland and Build to present pricing and then get the contract signed with Crossland. After that, we know between potential building fund transfers, end-of-the-year money that we were able to save this school year, what's gonna be available to address the roads between upper and middle, potentially paving the bus parking lot behind middle. And then we've got things like cafeteria tables, AC for the gym at the upper, like things we would like to do this summer, but we need to know the construction price tag first. So those numbers will all be coming soon. They've been meeting since we selected Crossland a couple of weeks ago. Very busy for us right now, hiring season. We had the special hiring meeting where we hired several that night. I'll start inviting those new teachers in the June meeting, but I knew how many people we had on tap tonight at the start for celebrations. Questions?
Everybody saw the partnership goals, right? Did we, how many of those are they supposed to be doing? I know we updated that last year, right?
Trying to have everybody be connected to one, because it's hard for every subject area to find a partnership. May have another five to 10 coming up when we do our academic achievement in June. So some of those have just been happening the last couple of weeks, so there'll be pictures and things attached to that.
I just want to make the comment, that is a joy to read those and go over those. School board members, we sometimes get hit with the not, the negative things and to see all of the positive that our community is doing or that staff is doing, it is, it is a pleasure to always sit down and read through those, so.
Mrs. Crane's career fair was the pinnacle of that. Everybody in that room was a, was a Grabat family reunion and then there were all kinds of regional partners and connections to our parents, our parents' jobs, other people that we've had connections with. To hold the attention of the entire eighth grade class for three hours, we had a lot of interesting things in there that morning.
Is that the first one that she's done?
Yep.
Yeah. I thought there was gonna be like five people, I was kind of worried about what Joe and I were going to say for 20 minutes, but now that's a great time now.
Awesome.
Let's see. Dennis, you want to go?
Sure. Okay, reviewing financial results for period 10, April, fiscal '25. Property tax receipts for April were close to $1 million. Total receipts from all sources for that month, close to 1.8 million. Included in that is our state foundation funding of $417,000 and a 6B payment of $116,000 through April. Here-to-date receipts are close to $18.6 million, which is 72% of budgeted annual revenue. So we know this time of year, we run a little bit behind on that. We've received or made pullback payment, I was hoping for 6.1. We got 5.9 and change, so that'll work, man. We're looking pretty good on the budget so far.
So is that, that 72%, like when you forecast our budget, where would you have?
Total, yeah. What have we received today?
No, I got you, but you, I mean, obviously, you mentioned it, we're 83%, I think, through, sitting at 72% on revenue. Like, you feel good about that based on that?
Sure. And you guys know how I feel about these other payments. The way I look at it, it's Grabat's money. I don't like the county holding it, they're probably getting a lot of float. I wish they'd admitted as they receive it, but I guess that's tough for me to determine, so. Yeah, I think our revenues are holding up pretty good. I'm working with Mr. Grabat, Ms. Sears, looking at areas where they may cut. You know, I think our. You know, I think, uh, our transportation funding is going away. Uh, and some of Ms. Sears' funding will be trimmed as well. That's what we expect.
So that five, sorry, that 5.9 number gives up in the, that we were remaining balance of 5.7 or whatever?
Well, it'll be, it will be around a million. So, I want me to say, yeah, that's correct. Should be a little over a million, and you subtract the A's for what we budgeted.
Yeah, that's right.
Gross payroll each month, one and a quarter million, that's the gross. Total expenditures for the month were 2 million. Year-to-date expenditures totaling close to 20.3 million. Total outlays are 76%, and total budgeted expenditures were at 83%. We're looking okay, but remember, we have a double payroll in June, sir.
So, on your, on your expenditures, on your operating fund, the remaining balance that's budgeted is like 2 million, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, what is that, what are those funds?
Okay, so, remember certified teacher gross pay goes in the fund one, so they can take a snapshot of what my teacher pay is, because most of your expenses teacher pay. They make more than classified typically, we have more of that. The teacher benefits go in the fund 2,000, plus the gross pay for all the classified salaries, such as myself and our benefits. It's also the building fund budgets, it's pencil, pencils, paper, glue, that type of thing. Uh, Richard's stuff, transportation facilities, fuel.
Okay, so that, so you said what I?
Those operating costs.
So the operating costs that are down below, that were at 79%?
Right. Yeah, that's funds one, two, and six, so it's captured all teacher salary, the fund two. But I'm, I'm also picking up other funds with that. So one, fund 1,000 is straight certified pay out of property taxes. Some restricted funds, if you're paying teachers out of there, require you to have a one series account. For instance, uh, I was working with Dr. Newsom. ABC requires you to put the teachers in fund 1365. So that operating center is picking those up as well.
That's a, 2 and 6.
Yes, 6B, a sped fund, we pay certain, some classified out of that. It doesn't have a one series fund. Is there any method to that madness? Not that I've seen. You just have to remember which ones do and which ones don't.
Yeah, but, so, if you just look at this and you don't know that, if you look at this and figure what, you know, we got 5 million of revenue left to come in, correct?
We received 5.9, at least on property tax.
Yeah, I mean, left in the, but, but it's a, total revenues for the year is gonna be 7,303 and some change.
Correct.
Total.
That's what's, that's what's remaining on the budget.
So the remaining balance in your budgets here, so there's 5,337. Any expenditures up there at the top, correct?
Uh, I'm following that, 5,337.
Remaining balance?
The 6.3.
I'm sorry, 6.3.
About 6.4.
Sorry, 6.3.
Right, it's 6.4, uh, we've received 5.9, so there's some left.
I'm just, yeah.
Usually get.
But then you take the operating costs below, and if you take the remaining balance that's been budgeted for them, that's 5 million.
But that's all sitting inside of the expenditures, yeah. It's all rolled up into those expenditures at the top, which doesn't really make sense. It's not intuitive.
I know.
But it's inside.
But if I'm, what, what I'm trying to get here is if somebody looks at this, they might think that we're in trouble. Because part of the operating costs down below that are left in our budget, that's 4,967, 850. If you add that, plus the, the 6,397.
It doesn't feel like a sub-bullet below where the operating cost centers are.
Yeah, you're talking, yeah.
It, it's inclusive, it feels almost like.
It also has fund six, which are all the six series restricted funds.
I know, but I'm just saying, I just wanna get that clarified.
Right, right.
Cause it looks like we're upside down.
Yeah.
That we're gonna be short for the year, like 4, 3 million.
No.
I, I know.
Right, yeah, well.
But it's, it's worth calling out though, when, when we're reviewing this. And I, I guess we'll know, maybe we can remember that, but it's not super intuitive to be able to backtrack into what we're saying up top. I think it's a good, yeah, it's a good call out.
Right, I mean, we're, we're very close to our estimate on property tax every year. And with that being said, you know, we look at the results by operating center, and we are so close in salaries, and you gotta be, it's 85% of your spend, okay? You don't really see anybody over budget a lot, because you have so much in salary to, to pay.
All right, I just wanna make the statement that people are going online, looking at board packets, whatever agendas, they see this, and if they start doing math and not know that this part is part of that part, it looks bad.
Yeah, it's, I understand that's not always intuitive.
Yeah.
But I had to capture everything, my location, when we put this in here about five years ago.
Is that why, is, is that's why it's reg if like that?
Yeah, and so, you know, you'd have to pull out fund one, two, and six up top, and it's not always, you know.
I think what's happening is you, you have responded to things the board have asked you to detail out below, and so it's, okay, it's like conglomerate of, it is, could be hard to track.
Right, and, you know, every one of these numbers ties to the general ledger, so we're, we're there. Um, so if you look at the bottom of page two, here's, you know, that receipt of an uneven revenue. So for what we've budgeted over expenditures, you know, we talked about, we had a few adjustments there, so we're showing 155,000 short. That's like point oh oh something on that. But year-to-date, we are underwater, 1.18 million, just because of the timing it was pulled back on. So, but that doesn't help. Uh, no, we're, we're tracked with the budget, you know, barring some unforeseen big event, extraordinary event, and, uh.
You wanna forecast it?
Well, you know, I will, but some of those principal, big principal payments can't do this year, so I've got some outstanding checks that are final payments. I, I know Mr. Moerman tries to get me to make the call early on. I, I think I've been pretty good with that. I mean, our system's been in place for a long time, and it looks like it works. Gonna make that, have that for your next poll, maybe.
We're at 83%, it's time to make the call. You gotta, gotta lay your cards down.
Is there any incentive for?
We can put a couple bucks on that.
CPA stipend maybe? Uh, yeah, you know, we'll, we'll see. The, the hesitancy is the uncertainty in the political environment, okay? It's, it's not just the federal administration, but, you know, we had turnover with the governor too, who had a lot of, made a lot of changes, so. I, I would say we will make a building transfer. I don't expect it to be as big as it has in years past. But, you know, the, the fact of the matter is, we're, we're looking at 60-plus million in assets, okay? And what are we showing out every year just to maintain those? I mean, Richard and his staff are doing a great job with that, but, I mean, we're showing out probably on average 500,000. I mean, to, to roll a flat roof, 500, I don't know how much you do, every HVAC, 500,000. So we, we need a minimum, try to get 500,000. 250?
I've got some, so I appreciate what Tracy brought up, just because of the transparency and stuff. But we do, you do have it saying, with an asterisk, saying operating fund subcategories are listed below.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's true.
But, so I, I see where, and I appreciate Tracy clarification, but that is, it is asterisk. I just wanted to say that.
Stick it up for you, Dennis.
Yeah, I'm sticking up for it. Oh, it, it has the asterisk, and it says operating. Yes, it does, so.
Uh, so, looking, looking at the expenditures line by line, we're at 79% of our budgeted total teacher salary spend, all over 83% for the year. What's June's payroll, it's about 1.7 times what our regular payroll is, so that'll catch up. Operating fund I'm happy with is at 82% versus 84, so instead of 1%, I'll give it 1% under. Depending on, on when you look at the press, you know, inflation's coming down, or everybody's terrified, it'll go back up. Uh, building fund, of course, at 94%. Debt service fund at 43%. Uh, you know, like I said, it's tough to see some of that principal contribute on some of those issues. Federal funds at 54%, she's being conservative with that, do get uncertain. Any cash in the bank, 3.5 million. Utilities look pretty good, they're at 74%, even over 83% of the year. And then we discuss the portion at the bottom.
Your motion to approve?
I move that we approve the monthly financial report as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
We just did.
Others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Dennis.
Thanks, Dennis.
Matt's curriculum, it's Andrew.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that.
I shared some information with you by email, and after meeting with our math team, K5 would like to adopt Eureka Math Square. And I shared a quote for a one-year quote, and then I shared a three-year quote. Um, and then our Algebra 1, Algebra 2, and Geometry would like to go with Imagine IM, which is illustrative math. Um, the middle school would like to hold off and wait. Um, they are gonna decide between these two programs, but they're gonna pilot both of those and try some different lessons and units from both of those. Um, there's also some changes coming with, um, standard changes with advanced coursework options. Um, and so those will kind of impact some of our advanced courses at the middle school. Um, so we would like to wait on six through eight until next year, and then go ahead and adopt Eureka Math Square at K5, and Imagine IM for Algebra 1, Algebra 2, and Geometry. And Algebra 1 and Geomet, or Algebra 1 at the middle school would be Imagine IM, so it would follow the same as what they're doing at the high school, Algebra 1. And I would recommend both the three-year quote on both of those, because we do get a cost savings on that yearly fee when they bundle, um, the subscriptions on the digital prices. Are there questions on any of that? You also have the quotes in front of you.
This is the, this is kinda way outside of my expertise, so. Not that I even have one, but.
If you need more time to look at it, we can wait till the June 2nd meeting also.
We probably do, for sure, but, uh, the three-year, the three-year agreement, or we still, do we still pay that at once?
Yes, we would still pay that at once. And then after that three years, there would be a yearly cost, um, for the, for K5. And assuming their prices don't go up, this is based on the one-year quote that they gave us, would be about 35,000 a year. Um, and then the Algebra 1, Algebra 2, and Geometry would be about 30,000 a year.
And what are we, what are we paying for per year? Like, can you describe?
Yeah, so, so in the first year, you'll see that, like, it includes manipulatives, and it includes the teachers' rent materials for the teacher's manual, so that's why that first year is typically more expensive. The Imagine IM also includes some professional development. Um, we would have professional development with Eureka Math Square also, but that is not included in the quote, and I'm working on negotiating some of that. So that is not included in the Eureka Math Square, but it is included in the IM. So you wouldn't have that after the first year. Um, but your subscription for your yearly is your digital online access, and then any consumable workbooks that you have. So, like, at the K5 with Eureka Math Square, they have a learn book, which is like a typical math workbook that they would use in class, but then they also have an apply book, which could be homework. Um, it has a parent letter in there that explains what the students are doing, and it, you know, kinda gives parents the background information of what students are learning in math. And then at the high school level, those high school courses also have a workbook.
Should we, when we evaluate curriculum, should we? Is it, should it be concerning? Again, I don't, I'm asking, cause I, that there are two different vendors or resources?
I think that's a great question, and Matt Barstow actually emailed me a similar question to that. Ideally, I would love to have something that's, that's K-12. When you get into your high school courses, there's not a lot of options for that. Um, Imagine IM does have something K-12, um, but teachers really liked the direct instruction pieces of Eureka Math Square more at the elementary level. And so looking at it, I feel like these two curriculums flow really well. I think there's an align, there's obviously an alignment with standards, cause it's all based on the Arkansas standards. But I think having that direct instruction at the elementary level, and then turning more and moving more into the problem-based model as you get higher up into the grade levels will, will work very well. There's another district nearby that is doing a very similar, their K-4, Eureka Math Square, and then 612, Imagine IM, or illustrative math. And their scores have shown.
They've already implemented that?
Benzo is doing that.
I had those similar questions, and I'm kinda like, Chris, I'm not gonna pretend to know them with you or the teachers and make a decision. So, but that's helpful.
Those are great questions.
And also, like, just the, you know, the gap, so not kinda doing this wholesale change together. I, I wonder about, like, that is, that's not super intuitive to me as to why wouldn't, especially if we're gonna have professional development, other things coming in that might be able to cross-pollinate.
Typically on your, like, so at middle school, they would probably do that separate just cause the courses are different, um, with the, with the professional development piece. I would, I would, they were not ready to make a decision. And so to have them make a decision when they aren't ready and, and get something that they're not really excited about using and implementing, I don't think would, would be in our favor, if that makes sense. And they, and they have scores that demonstrate that what they're doing is working. So I was fine with letting them pilot both programs and see which one they preferred, since they are kind of in the middle of. But one of the things we did talk about was maybe having our advanced courses go with the illustrative IM, and then the, like, our sixth grade math, they would stay with Eureka. So they would maybe kind of be split at the building level anyway. But, I mean, ideally, I would love for them to have been ready to adopt something and all, do it all at once, but.
Is there, sorry, is there a risk of them adopting something in a subsequent year that kind of throws all this like? Who wrote the song, like Johnny Cash, he's like, took his car home like Visa? I mean, are we into that situation? Are we into that situation?
Not sure. Not, I was just trying to ask you. I don't know, I write a song. You can sing it for me, and I have the.
I would not sing it. If they decide next year, could this, is this something that we could implement in the fall?
That's the plan, is implement it this fall.
But you would implement it in the middle school, other than you would hybrid.
We're, yeah, we're gonna kind of, they're gonna pile in, try and see which one they would most succeed with.
Obviously, you would make a decision by next school year.
And if they were ready to make a decision, if they, like, we could make it in December, and they could do it in the, in the spring possibly. I don't know that I would necessarily suggest that, because changing a curriculum right in the middle of the year when students have been used to.
Which is a lot of X to middle school.
Yeah.
And the teachers, the math teachers have had their hands on this stuff?
Yes. Yes, and they looked at alignment to the Arkansas learning standards. They looked at the different ways that assessment that the program offers. They looked at the different lesson types. Um, we had presenters come in from both companies and present, and present to the teachers, and then they've been able to get in with the digital app. We had presenters come in from both companies and present, and present to the teachers, and then they've been able to get in with the digital access and samples and look at all of that. And they also reached out, and several of our teachers reached out to other teachers in districts to see what they were using, and specifically these two programs, and which ones they liked, and things that were good about it, or things they didn't like about it.
And I'm not like them, so there's no chance of standards or anything changing, that we go out and spend this money, and now we got to spend some more for it?
As of right now, everything I'm hearing, the only thing that they're looking at changing are, like, the advanced courses. So Arkansas has a big push right now for advanced courses and student advancement, so the seventh grade honors math class, Arkansas really is pushing for us to add fifth and sixth grade honors math classes. And so, there are possibly some changes with standards for honors courses, but not for just sixth grade math, or seventh grade math, or fifth grade, or third grade, or fourth grade. And so, if there were changes, and the curriculum's the way that they are written and how they have everything online, they will adapt and they will modify to meet Arkansas learning standards. Our teachers are also experts in that, and they will be able to modify and adapt to those pieces.
But like, if they do that, they'll give us...
Yes, we get that, because it's all, yeah, they give us updates.
That's within that three-year?
Yes, they give us updates, yes, I see what you're asking now.
Yeah.
Good question, this all makes sense to me. Just remind our audience and everyone as, how long it's been since we have updated our math curriculum?
I believe it has been over ten years.
Okay, so, yeah, and I know, talking at parent-teacher conferences with math teachers, that they've put a lot of work into this, so I want to just say I appreciate that, because on top of everything else, these last months of school, to spend time, especially when we have not updated for ten years, it's a big thing.
And they have done a lot of work in those ten years to help realign it to the new Arkansas standards, creating materials on their own, creating PowerPoints and assessments. I mean, they've done a ton of work, and the idea behind having a high-quality instructional program and materials is that it takes some of that work off our teachers' plate. The first year is tough with implementation, because you're learning, but it should take things off our teachers' plate.
And then, my question too, because it makes sense to do the three-year contract, what advantage would a one-year contract possibly be?
If it was a terror, if we ended up being terror.
Yeah, and they got into it and they just absolutely hated it after the first year, but I do trust that since they've talked to other people that have implemented it, other teachers, and other teachers that actually used to be in our district that have gone to other districts, that they, they feel confident and they really like how it's implemented.
Are these contracts like cell phones that you can't get out of with the Supreme Court, or is it like a normal contract that has outs for like, you know, let's say this thing didn't go like we liked it to, or convenience clauses or things like that?
We could probably get out of it, they could probably maybe negotiate some things with us, like, it might be, you get a credit for some other product that they offer. But typically, you're kind of committed, and they do let us, like, change numbers, so if we had, like, a huge drop in enrollment of one of our grade levels and another grade level grew, we can switch those numbers around and get workbooks for fifth grade instead of kindergarten or whatever.
Any other questions?
More questions?
Thank you for all the work.
Glad I didn't have to read the math books.
Yes, we do.
But if you do, like, if you, I don't know if you've had a chance to get online and look at the digital resources, but if you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to, to answer those or set up calls with them there.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders.
Okay. Now we're going to do a board vacancy appointment. Okay. So, I just want to explain this procedure that we're going to do tonight, so everybody's clear. The current standard or policies for reap, for appointing vacant board positions are very vague, meaning that we're, we are as a board, any board in the state of Arkansas, for that matter, and literally divine appointees just in the middle of the meeting, okay? So there's really no set procedure right now, okay? This year, in the legislature, they passed, they actually passed a procedure that boards will follow to appoint vacant positions, okay? So, I would say tonight, we're going to do a hybrid move, or probably we're going to kind of lean towards being as transparent as we can. So, this is what, what we're going to try tonight. We've got the candidates here that have submitted their information to be, to be considered for appointment. Each candidate is going to get five minutes, and the candidate will kick off their five minutes with whatever they want, tell us their background, kind of summarize what you put in the application. The board has seen that information, the questions have been answered, so, just so you're aware. We will ask questions as we go along. We will try to be fair, if we ask a question of the first candidate, and you're the sixth, or fifth, or seventh candidate, or you're kind of going to get some prep time, okay? So, I don't know how else to do that part, so if we ask a weird question of the first candidate, my apologies to the first candidate, okay? Once the candidates have presented their information and we have had any questions that we've had answered, we are going to... I'm going to give each board member five votes, okay? They can put all five votes on one person, they can put, no, I mean, they can spread out their vote to five people, okay? And we're just going to tally the votes, and that'll be our appointee, we'll make a motion for that person to be our new board member. That prevents a couple of things to me. One, part of the new policy that was passed this year was this has to be done in an open session, okay? So, it, when I say we're doing a hybrid, we, that will present our board being transparent, everybody can hear the candidate's positions or their background in the public forum. It also prevents us from debating in the open meeting, like, what kind of shirt, you know what I mean? Like, we don't want to be up here debating people that are in our district that we have known for a long time. All the candidates that have applied would be good board members, and so, we're kind of in a, in a spot where we're just going to take the most fair stance that we can, okay? So we're going to get five votes, I'll tally the votes, Brad or Jennifer will also tally them, so they know that I'm not favoring somebody. And then, we'll make a motion and appoint that person, okay? Any questions?
Can we...
Whoever you want to go first.
Mr. Beckett?
Yes, sir.
While you're available?
Yes, and I apologize, I have to step out, because I am on duty. I do have to leave, it's not because I'm upset. My name is Joey Beckett, I have been a lifelong resident of the Grabit School District and the Grabit community. I've been involved in many different activities, volunteer...
Stop, sorry, Joey, are you timing?
I got it.
You're good, I thank you for being functional.
I was thinking that though.
I paused the time.
I just knew I wasn't, and I was like, whoa, okay.
I got it.
Thank you.
I have applied my application and information in for this, because I enjoy helping out our school system and our children. I do still have kids in the school district, I have one that's graduated from Grabit. I'm a graduate, a grab as myself, started kindergarten all the way through senior high, graduated with honors when I finished in high school. So, I really believe in the Grabit School District, I love the people that work here. I enjoy being able to help with the field days that we had yesterday, we got the help, as the fire department came up and messed around with the kids and sprayed some of the elementary kids to let them enjoy the end of the school year. But I just feel like this is an opportunity to be able to serve and provide and get back to the school district and community.
Oh, I mean, I guess I'll ask a fair question, like, what are your, what are the kids of the district involved in?
Should I list what they're not involved in? No, athletics is, is one, is a big one for the kids, but also, both of my boys are advanced in their classes, and they've taken advanced educational opportunities. They have different, changing interests every year, so I know they've been involved with band and choir and different arts programs, so they, whatever their interest is that year, trying to support that.
All right, I have a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
I want to know your stance on our Bible classes that we offer here.
Okay, my stance is I'm absolutely for it. I, I know it is a sticky subject for a lot of people, but I have zero opposition to it.
And then, what do you feel like is the, the most important thing that a school board does for the district?
Well, I mean, you guys are the deciding factor in a lot of successful measures that take place within the district. When it comes to a large decision or a project that's taking place, the, the collective intelligence and cooperation, cooperation with the group helps to send us in the right direction. And I think that that really does, I mean, the success of our district has showed how well our school board is active for the last several years.
And I'll follow up with that. Name to me one of the important measures you've seen that the board has taken.
So, I really am impressed with the, if I can get the acronym right, is it CSSRs or CSSMs?
CSSOs?
Oh, there we go, I knew, but I, I have done some coordinated training with them, and I love the proactive approach and the thoughts behind it, and being, having the children's best interest at heart, and making sure that they are trained and well-operating and good individuals for those positions. That was a fantastic program.
Great, thanks Joey.
I have one question, so we, we have a pretty strict policy around drugs, and I think it's well documented, you know, our stance on that.
Yep.
So what's your opinion of the policy?
As far as for like expulsion? I honestly see both sides of the discussion, and when I was on the superintendent's cabinet, we had this discussion about the full-year expulsion. In the discussion I brought up, if we're going to change that from a full-year expulsion, there needs to be some pretty hefty measures involved on the student's behalf. You can't do everything on a case-by-case basis, it's impossible. So there needs to be a hard, fast, set rule, and I, I understand the school's stance on full-year expulsions. The only thing that I think would be adapted to it is number of offenses. But it also needs to be done professionally and legally, and across the board, there's no favoritism, no, if, whatever, whatever happens, happens, so.
Yeah, forty seconds, Robert.
Have you ever served on a board?
Did I take your question?
That's fine.
I have.
This board?
About this board. I, I have served on the baseball and softball board, I have been on the Metro Chiefs Regional Training Committee, I've served on different fire service EMS committees throughout the state, so.
Oh, so I had to back up, but you're twenty seconds ahead of me.
My only question always is, what's your, what's your strength?
Uh, my strength is being honest.
What's your weakness?
Taking things too personally.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joey.
Thanks, Joey.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joey.
I'll go from the top.
Mr. Cause Dale.
Math?
Alphabetical order.
So, this is weird. I don't like to talk about myself, I don't like the big fuss, made of myself, I never have. So I couldn't think of what really to tell you guys, except for why I wanted to ever be on this board to begin with. So, many years ago, God gave me a desire, and that desire was basically to make a difference in the lives of the youth, the students in this area. I might have lost the election to a wonderful person, but I did not lose that desire. So that's why I'm up here again tonight, I'm not going to die yet. But, I really think that we still have an opportunity as a district to reach our students, not just now, but in generations to come. For the better, for the good, and I believe that if we see a problem, I'm one of those guys, if we see a problem, that if we can make it better, we have the responsibility to do that. To make a change, to make it happen. Now, what I do, I, I, you know, I've worked with a lot of people over the years, and I've trained a lot of people. A lot of guys, from pastors to felons, I've trained a lot of guys, and I've even trained a few women. But what I've learned is that a lot of them won't have a desire to work. Unless they already have that to do good. So, how do you, it, it, it doesn't matter how, how you, how you, what you do with them, it doesn't matter if you pay them extra, it doesn't matter if you jump them all day long and just gnaw on them, if they don't have a desire to do good, they won't do it. I believe our students are the same way. I think if, if you were to ask our teachers or our administration, they're the same way. If they don't have a desire, they're not going to do it. They're not going to do good on tests, they're not going to work for it. And I think that the problem is self-worth. I think, I think they don't feel valued. Now, don't get me wrong, I don't think every child is worthy of a trophy. Because if you're not putting in the work, you don't deserve to be honored. Okay, not everybody deserves it. Trying to save some time here. I'm talking about letting them know that they have worth, letting them know that they have value, that they have what it takes. When our kids are built up at home, that's one thing. But if we can find a way to build our kids up here at our schools, that could be something completely different. They can feel like they can take on the work. And I think this school could be something like that. I know we're starting this leader and me program, but I think there's gaps in there, I think there's gaps that can be filled. And I think we can do it. I think that we can find a way to let these students know that they have what it takes, that there is good, and I think we need to show them what it looks like. I think we need to show them that they can do it, and encourage them to do it, not just only teacher to student, but encourage them to do it as student to student. Because there's a lack there too, because we all know peers can be really hard on one another. But if a student has a solid self-worth, they will have a desire to do good. They're going to do better on the tests, the scores are going to go up, they're going to try harder on the field, they're going to try harder in the stands. Our band kids, our choir kids, our drama teams are going to shine brighter than anyone else out there, if we will encourage them to feel worth, and let them know they have what it takes. Now, I've seen, I've seen this happen at work, I've seen this happen with other kids in my youth group, because I've had kids come in that have nothing.
Sorry, finish it up.
I've seen wins and losses, and it was just my desire, guys.
Sorry, I took it too much.
You're okay.
You get, you suck too.
You earned the extended buzzer.
So, any quick questions?
Do we want to read back the original questions?
Yeah.
I wrote them down.
Yeah. No, 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 you're not gonna do these.
Uh, we'd like everybody to answer the questions, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
First question was, what types of things have your kids been involved in, in the district?
Uh, well, my oldest was in, uh, basketball. Uh, but she really shined in the drama department this year and a lot of the last couple of years. Uh, Hope, she just wants to be not in school. She wants to be out jumping in the woods and doing stuff like that, so.
Give me an easy one. What is your opinion on our Bible classes?
What's my opinion on our Bible classes? I think they need to keep going up on the, uh, high school. That's my opinion.
What's the first thing the school board does?
I have a view.
Your feeling on our expulsion policy around drugs?
Yeah, I think we, I think we don't, we iron this thing out for, well, for, for good, because there was loopholes and we actually made it to where if a kid wants to do the work, then they can get back in. But yes, we need to just continue to be zero tolerance at school.
Your strengths and weaknesses?
Mine? Sometimes I call a spade a spade, that's me. And, uh, jump out in front of traffic every once in a while. I've been known to cut a ear off or two.
Boards you've served on?
Huh?
Boards you have served on?
Uh, this one, uh, church board. Is that it?
Those were the, do we add questions each time or we wanna keep these questions?
All right, thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. Everybody. If I didn't know how to stand up here in front of rootless people, I probably wouldn't have played. So, a little bit about myself, I'm not originally from the Gravit community, but I have been a part of this community for, at least twenty years now. Uh, kinda married into it, so to speak, my wife. I'm from the area. I graduated from Dillon County High School, then I went to also P Ridge, so I'm familiar with the area. And I've watched this area grow, right? And, uh, something unique about our community and against the other communities around us is, everybody else has grown really large. And I've seen them kind of lose their identity. And I think that's something I'm really proud of our school district and our community, is that we have retained that identity. And I understand there's always a need for growth, right? And I think that's the position that you guys are in, is finding that balance between growth and empowering our students, the faculty, the coaches, everybody involved with this organization, to make sure we have the right folks, but to maintain our identity as Gravit. So, I'm super proud to be a part of this community. I've been involved with youth sports the entire time I've been here. Every time that a volunteer was needed, I've always raised my hand. And, uh, it's something that I'm really passionate about. I've poured that passion into the baseball and softball league for the last six years that I've been involved with. Some of you guys as well. I know you from there. I'd like to bring that same passion to help in our school district.
What types of activities have your kids been involved in?
Kinda like Joey did. Which ones have they not been involved with? So, basketball, baseball, softball, T-ball. Uh, my daughter's in sixth grade, going into seventh grade right now. She's involved with choir. Next year, she's working, looking at musical theater, maybe junior high cheer team. She's really proud of that. Uh, looking at playing seventh grade basketball. So, my son's in baseball, football.
Your opinion on our Bible classes?
I think it's an excellent opportunity for our youth to have that option. I understand that it's a polarizing issue at times. Um, I've, I've had thoughts on this for a long time, that it's like a lot of things in life, if you don't like it, you go on by, right? Nobody is making anybody attend that. It's awesome to have that option to attend if you want to.
Most important things a school board does?
Provide leadership. I think, uh, provide a vision for the district, right? It's like I spoke about earlier, making sure to provide oversight and to provide guidance. And provide support for the administrators and the, uh, teachers and coaches and everybody involved.
Your view on our expulsion policies surrounding drugs?
I think if you're flexible on things, flexibility creates issues. Right? So you have to have a hard approach on serious issues. You have to have a firm black and white, um, approach to that. I think as long as the school district is making sure that they're sharing a pathway back for those, those children, that's, that's a really good policy.
Types of boards you've been involved in previously?
I've been involved with the baseball softball board for the previous six years and, uh, I've previously served alongside them as well, in cheer.
Your personal strengths and weaknesses?
Very diplomatic, as far as a strength, but also can be a weakness at times, because it does tend to create issues where maybe you overthink things and try to, you know, being very firm and consistent.
Appreciate your service. Kit Kane.
Hi, uh, I saw the opportunity, so I thought I'd put my name in the running. I've grown up in Gravit my whole life and my kids are now in the elementary school, which will make them the fourth generation in my family to be in this area. And so I just really love this school district and where it's come from and where it's going. And I'm sure that the teachers that retired tonight can tell you the difference between even when I was in school fifteen years ago to the way kids are now, that there's, things are just changing and have been changing. And I, I think there's a great opportunity as this area grows to be almost like, like you were saying with the Bible classes and just being in a unique spot that I continue to hear friends talk about the Bentonville and P Ridge and other, just continue to grow. And Gravit has been able to stay, kinda hold that, hold that off as long as possible, even though it is coming that the school district will continue to grow. But as long as we're ready for the growth and have the right things implemented, I think there's a, a very bright future. And to make sure every kid that comes through Gravit wants to be here, is excited to be at school, and has every opportunity that there's, that there is in the school, between engineering and the, you know, specific classes that we have that not every school district has. Because not every kid comes from the same background. There's a lot of privilege where people have a good home life and then there's kids. Uh, my wife currently works in the elementary at the kindergarten aid. And she's had kids that have come in that probably haven't had a shower all week. And so having the stability of the classroom is really big to a lot of families. And I think it's very important to continue to provide the things like the Bible class and just good teachers that wanna be there and wanna help their kids and be there for their kids.
Yes, your kids are pretty young, aren't they?
Yeah.
What kinds of things do you think they'll be involved in or programs to support?
Uh, for sure athletics. They're already starting to get into cheer and soccer, uh, and just have an opportunity to, to try whatever they wanna do. Have an opportunity in the school to do it, and I think it's a good thing.
Uh, your opinion on our Bible classes?
I, I love the choice that they have, because my kids love going to it. They tell me about it all the time. And, and they tell me the kids that don't go and how respected they are, and no one's treated unfairly if they choose not to go.
The most important thing a school board does?
Uh, I think accountability, uh, between budgets and teachers and, you know, things fluctuate, parents. There's just a lot of moving parts that it takes, you know, a community to kinda hold everybody and everything together.
Your view on our drug expulsion policy?
Uh, I'm not currently, don't know it fully. Uh, I know that, I think from the past to now, there's a big difference in, I think, on a per, uh, per-person basis, because I think, I don't think kids seek out to go after drugs, but I think there are certain situations where their home life, that's all they know. Uh, and so I do believe in expulsion to an extent.
Are there boards you've served on?
Uh, I've served kinda as a youth pastor, but I've never been on a board myself.
Your personal strengths and weaknesses?
Uh, weakness, I probably don't speak of as much as I should. Strengths, I, I just enjoy making sure everybody's taken care of, making sure everybody is noticed and heard.
That's good.
Thanks, kids. Kim Lenny.
Hey, my name is Kimlin. Um, I have six kids. Um, my two have graduated from Gravit High School. Um, I have one that's going to be a sophomore, one that's gonna be a seventh grader, and then two babies who will eventually be in the school district. Um, I saw that there was an opening and just wanted to, um, join, uh, be more a part of the community. I haven't lived here as long as everybody else have, when we've been here about three, um, years, but we did buy a house here. We are committed, this is the, uh, school district, we wanted to raise our little ones in and have our older ones in. And we saw a big difference, um, in behaviors and attending school and stuff when we moved up here. Um, the other reason is I, uh, my job, I feel like with my job that it can be a good, um, I see things from a little different way. And so, um, I think that I could give some insight and, um, offer a different perspective to things.
Good. Um, what types of activities are your kids involved in?
Uh, my two older ones weren't really involved in anything. Um, they came here from Benton West High School, so just kinda getting used to things. Everything was full up there, so they couldn't really play any sports. Um, they had been involved in like football and volleyball and things, but when they came up here, there wasn't really anything for them that they felt to be involved in. Um, my daughter is very involved in theater at, um, Gravit High School. She loves it. She plans on continuing with that. Um, my son, who's going into seventh grade, has shown an interest in football wrestling. He's ADHD and autistic, so he's kind of just trying to find where his, um, where he will fit. And then the younger two, of course, they're babies, so we don't know what they'll be involved in.
What is your opinion of our Bible classes?
Um, I'm all for it. I think that Bible in the school is very important and it keeps us grounded in where we need to be going.
What is the most important thing a school board does?
I think like everybody said, accountability. You guys keep everybody in line. If there wasn't a school board, then who knows what would be happening. So I think it's very important.
Uh, your view on our drug expulsion policy?
Um, I agree with the drug expulsion policy. However, I would, I see the other end of it. Um, as far as kids falling through the cracks and ending further in, um, my, our system that I work for. Uh, I would like to, I, for the expulsion, I'd just like to see more support, um, for them. A lot of the kids don't have people at home who can help them and guide them through homeschool. And oftentimes we see them drop out, having to get GED, go to graduate Arkansas, and there's really no direction, which they already didn't have due to their circumstances at home, which led them to use, which led to the problem of not being in school. And then we just kinda get further with them.
Do you have any experience with serving on boards or other services?
No, I've never been on a board. Um, I was on the route team at my work, but, um, and I helped with the preschool at my church.
Personal strengths and weaknesses?
Um, my strength is I'm a people person. I love working with the public. I love working, um, with kids. Um, that's why I went to college and that's why I work with the juvenile system. Um, as far as, uh, my weaknesses, um, I have a hard time saying no. Um, I like to help, um, wherever I can, and sometimes I overextend myself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jay Alafon.
I'm here because I'm passionate about education. And I know that board members don't always have enough time to prepare. So to make it easy on you, I'm sharing the responses that I submitted. I'll bet there's at least one board member that didn't get a chance to read.
Not true, Joe.
So you can pass that around. And I'm perfectly happy for this to be more of a conversation than a lecture. So feel free to interrupt me at any point in time. And Brad, I'll tell you that if you are looking for references for me about whether I am a candid and honest person, you can ask several people at Walmart that I've worked with over nine years. And they will tell you, I'm not a brown-noser, but I do give credit where credit is due. So Tracy? You saw that list, right?
Yeah.
So that provides evidence that you and I have known each other for twenty-two years, right?
Yes.
Did we ever disagree?
We have.
Did we get over it?
Yes.
Heather? I believe you did an excellent job when you served as president of this board. Did you and I ever disagree?
Um, more than once.
Did we get over it?
Ooh, thank you.
Robin? I'm disappointed that you chose not to continue standing. I think you were a great board member, and I'm glad it's serving with you. I am thrilled that there are nine people interested in serving on this board. Many of our districts, and I'm disappointed that Gravit now joined them, have school board elections and nobody runs. Okay? So, I respectfully submit that a one-year appointment is not a time to bring in a rookie, okay? That's based on my own experience. Here's a copy of the West Side Eagle Observer, which I'm a subscriber of. I love reading Susan's columns. That shows that a few years ago, I earned my master school board member designation. Tim, have you and I worked on different things together in the past? Did we always agree?
No.
Are, are we still friends and we got over it?
Yep.
Okay, so, I think there's room for dissent. I think that every member of this board, uh, grew up in Benton County? I did not, okay? I grew up in Kansas City and Houston. And about twenty-two years ago, I purchased the farm where my mother was born, five miles west of Gravit. And, uh, she was born in that farmhouse where I live now in nineteen thirty-six. Three years later, I married my next-door neighbor. So, Arkansas has been very good to me and I have tried to serve it. Uh, I think, yeah, Brandy's over there. I hope you guys are all aware that Quinn Duffy is working on an outdoor classroom.
Yes.
That's some information about it. Kirsten May reached out to me and said, hey, can you help us with this? You know, I serve on the Gravit Community Foundation Board, and I said, sure. And then thankfully, Dennis stepped in and said he could handle everything and provide the tax deductions and stuff for anybody willing to contribute. Jeff, did you have any experience with me when you were the superintendent of the Decatur School District?
I did.
So, did you see that I invested a significant amount of time in expanding the Western Benton County Career Center?
I believe there's a picture that you're cropped out of in my office.
But you're right there next to me. And when I was in high school, I took AP classes. I was ranked, I was tied for number one in a class of eight hundred and fifty, and then I didn't turn in my senior English paper. So I dropped a few ranks. I then went to Rice University. In five years, I earned a bachelor's degree and two master's degrees. Right after I graduated Chris in nineteen eighty-two, I took the CPA exam, passed all four parts my first try. You guys didn't ask me any questions. I know, but we'll ask for a start question.
What types of things have your kids been involved in?
My wife went to Gravit Schools. She was Miss Gravit in nineteen seventy-five. Her two daughters, which I consider daughters, attended Gravit Schools. Six grandchildren attended Gravit Schools. Six grandchildren attended Grabot Schools. The youngest, Cecilio, is in Glenn Duffy. I'm not sure which clubs he's joined yet, but I'm sure he'll be joining some at some point. My grandson Ian was an all-conference safety on the Grabot football team as a junior. Unfortunately, he tore his ACL in spring football practice, so he wasn't able to play his senior year. The granddaughters generally in more arts-oriented activities.
Your opinion on our Bible classes?
On the Bible classes? Several board members asked me to run for the board in about two thousand and eleven. And Kim Hendren called me up and he said, Jay, I have two questions for you. I said, shoot, Kim. He said, number one, what do you think of the Bible classes? I said, I think they're great. The reason I think they're great is regardless of your spiritual beliefs, I personally believe that you don't have a fundamental education if you don't have some kind of working knowledge of the Bible because of its influence on English and American literature.
Most important thing a school board does?
Can one of you guys turn your nameplates around? Good. It still says what's best for the kids. That's what Dr. Page shared with us. It's a reminder for us. So in all the service I did on the board, I always tried to remember that.
Your feeling on our drug expulsion policy?
I agree with the policy. Tracy's smiling. He and Heather will remember. I was frequently the sole dissenting vote when the board voted to expel kids. The reason for that is of, of all the things that I served on the board in ten years, expelling a kid for one mistake was literally painful for me. So I wanted that kid to know that somebody else understood. I've admitted before that I smoked marijuana in high school, and I did inhale, okay? So I understand it, and it was painful to me to see a kid's future messed up significantly by one mistake. So I encouraged Shannon and Taus to make sure that those kids that we did expel got a chance to get their credits and graduate from high school.
Boards you've served on in the past?
This board for ten years, served as president, I think a couple of times. I'm treasurer of the, uh, Grabot Community Foundation. I'm treasurer for the Grabot Kiwanis. I read dozens of scholarship applications. Congratulations, Danny, on Drew's excellent achievement. I love doing that. I've been a, a principal financial officer and worked with that board and other boards, but service on this one is most relevant.
Your personal strengths and weaknesses?
Strength? I'm willing to work at reading and being prepared, uh, you know, for board meetings. And I, I think Dennis could confirm that I was prepared, read the package, understood the financials, although I will tell you, Tracy understands numbers better than almost anybody I've ever seen. He's just incredible at that. And Tracy, thank you for illustrating that tonight with your questions to Dennis. Weakness? Lack of patience. I get impatient when people refuse to make decisions that are obvious to me, that are for the good. And, you know, I, I heard Melanie and another speaker tonight talk about the wrestling program. I'm proud of the fact that we approved the wrestling program during the time that I served on the board.
Thanks, Jay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Jessica Pike.
I'm Jessica Pike, and I am a lifelong resident of Grabot. I graduated from Grabot. I have fourteen years of educational experience. I have been a teacher for fourteen years. This is actually my first year that I am not teaching. My family owns a local business, a, um, Christian broadcasting company, and my uncle is in poor health, and so he has asked that I come on to help secure the success of the business in the future, and so I felt led to do that. And so I miss the educational environment. I want to ensure the, um, schools, the school system being productive and successful. I want to support educators. I would like to positively influence the community here and the success of students and teachers. I would love to help make decisions based on academics, discipline, curriculum, um, you know, the resources that we use, the resources that the teachers use, everything. I would love to be involved in that. And I have seen challenges in a classroom, I have seen success in a classroom. I have been a part of many great experiences, and I have had to have some of those really tough conversations that are not always fun in a classroom. And I would love to have this position to help this district and to help this board kind of bridge between the classroom and the community and the parents. I believe in win-win solutions, think-win-win. I feel like if you have those tough conversations and you are aware of all stakeholders, that anytime you're eventually going to be able to fight it, think-win-win solution. That will benefit all stakeholders. And ultimately, I have a passion for education, and I really just want to continue to be involved. I love it, and so, um, I would love to be a part of this.
What types of activities are your kids involved in?
So I have a ten-year-old son that is at Grabot Upper Elementary, and he is, he has found a love in football, he has found a love in baseball. He is on the leadership team, the lighthouse committee that is at the upper elementary. Not necessarily in this community, but he also in, um, Benton County, ha, is in, in Burnout in May. So he's involved in that as well.
Uh, your opinion on our Bible classes?
That sign right there, "In God We Trust." My family was a big supporter of Bill Dodson. I believe in two thousand and nineteen to get that law passed, that that sign was in all school buildings. And I think a world without God is a very empty and destructive world, and I am all about having God in the buildings and the school. And we are here to be Christian representatives, and I think it's a wonderful thing to have the Bible classes.
What do you think the most important thing a school board does is?
Making sure that the environment is what is best for students. Making those academic decisions that are best for students, making disciplined decisions that are best for students, making those hard, um, conversations, having those hard conversations, finding a compromise. You know, I think everyone's goal is the same with all stakeholders, what's best for students. It's just what route we find to get there.
Your opinion on our drug expulsion policy?
We had a saying in my school, what you do not prevent, you promote. What you do not condemn, you condone. And so I truly feel like you have to have a hard line. As a teacher, as a district, as a school board, you have to have a consistency. If you're constantly allowing students to go here and here and here, they're not sure what the consistent boundary is, and you cannot have a successful environment without consistency. And so I truly feel like while it's unfortunate and it's uncomfortable, but it's necessary sometimes to expel when we're expecting these students to eventually get out into life, and sometimes life is not easy for kids. Life is not, life's not going to give you anything. We have to learn those hard things, you know, as, as students in school. We have, we have to have a hard line.
Do you have any experience in boards or service positions?
Yes, so in my district, I had several leadership positions. I was in charge of all first-year teachers. I was their district mentor for five or six years. We had a two-year, um, initial certification program that I helped to lead and mentor the teachers on. I have been on several leadership committees within the district. We helped to make those, you know, title, financial decisions, some of the curriculum choices that you guys were talking about today. We had a lot of those conversations. I have helped to lead my building on a leadership committee. I was on the district superintendents team, the district leadership committee, and so, um, I have been in several leadership roles. I'm also a Sunday school teacher at my local church, and I help out my family with their, with their business.
Your personal strengths and weaknesses?
I like to be involved. I'm a problem solver. I'm a people person. I probably talk too much. And when I see a problem, I'm going to jump on that and I'm going to try to solve that, and sometimes that's not always welcome. So a strength would be I'm involved, I'm peopley. A weakness would probably be that I'm involved and I'm peopley.
Thank you.
Anyways, thank you.
Sam Whiteside.
Hello, everyone.
Hey, Sam.
So my name's Sam Whiteside. I was born and raised in Benton County in Northwest Arkansas on a cattle ranch. And I went to Grabot Schools, K through twelve, where I showed cattle, participated in four HFA sports, through football, basketball, and, uh, Grabot gave me the foundation that helped me to go on and have any success that I have today because of the community, the people, and the school and the teachers. I was in school when Ms. Dender was in school, and now she's here retiring today, so she was a part of my life and helped to build me to where I am today. Grabot helped me to be able to have a strong foundation, to be able to go on and complete my bachelor's degree at the University of Arkansas in Ag Business Management. And then from there, I got a, a great job down in Little Rock, working for Farm Bureau and Government Relations. And I've always had a passion for working in government and always hope to be able to return to that at some point in my life. While I was working at Farm Bureau, I achieved my MBA at night at the University of Central Arkansas, and at that time, found the opportunity to come back to Northwest Arkansas, which is home, and I always wanted to get back here. So I joined at Walmart, and what I want to talk about tonight is a little bit of what I learned there to be able to help me to be a successful board member tonight. While working at Walmart, I've had a lot of great experiences that would help me to be successful. So part of those is that, um, when I started working at Walmart, I worked as a financial planner, so I started to understand numbers. What do they tell you? What's working, what's not working? How do you develop a story out of those numbers, and then how do you take action upon those numbers to be able to continue to drive success? In my next roles, I was a buyer at Walmart, managing multi-billion dollar budgets. But I'm also a rancher, and I have my own ranch, so I manage multi-thousands of dollars as well, too, and that, too. So you just add a couple extra zeros to something, it's all numbers. And I would say that I have been very successful in those roles because I've been able to look at numbers, understand them, and then make decisions to be able to grow every business that I worked on at Walmart. And that opportunity, those opportunities and that success led me to further promotions at Walmart, where I learned the next set of skills that would help me be successful on this board, and that is people leadership. I was afforded the opportunity to be able to manage a team and to be able to guide them and teach and train them, and to provide an environment where they could thrive. And I truly enjoyed this and found passion in it, and I enjoy helping others. And it's the same thing within a school. There are students, there's teachers, and they all have to be motivated and enjoy what they're doing there to continue to ensure everyone is thriving. And so I know I can help to be able to continue to be a part of that as well, too. There's also the administrative efforts that are probably the most difficult and, uh, to manage and maintain, but those are pieces that I'm also familiar with. Hiring good talent, terminating, uh, teams whenever they don't perform and hold up expectations. Evaluations, managing people to those expectations, managing kids to those expectations. And that's a lot of what you all have to do, too, is manage the administrative task to ensure that this school runs smoothly. So between all those pieces of just financial acumen, management, um, I've been able to, I think I would be successful in being able to help be a part of this team that's already been successful, and I've already led our school to much success. And so for me, I would love to be a part of this because I'm also passionate about our kids and our teachers and the continued growth of this school as well, too, because it's going to continue growing. So I think I bring a lot of old-school understanding of where this county and city has been and where it's going to go as more and more people populate it. So I feel like I have a, a great ability to understand where we are and where we want to go in a responsible manner.
Activities your family and kids have been involved in?
So, uh, my kids are, my daughter is in fifth grade, and my son is in third grade, and my son's played baseball. My daughter is in Girls on the Run, and my wife actually volunteered to be a coach this year because they didn't know if they'd have enough coaches, and the Girls on the Run program has been an amazing benefit for my daughter and all the other girls that are in that. It helps to inspire them, give them self-confidence, and we are so proud that, that it's offered to our kids. Um, there's also, uh, I've been a coach for baseball, and I'm also a member of the, um, Watchdog Dads as well.
Your opinion on our Bible classes?
I think that the Bible classes are important and necessary for our kids, and they need to be able to know what's right and what's wrong. My kids have come home and they've told me what they, uh, how much they enjoy those classes. Uh, I'm a lot like Jay as well, too, where I think like even if you don't believe that way, I think it's good to be able to understand the cultural relevance of it as well, too. Um, you need to be able to understand God, Jesus, and what the beliefs are of those around us. And so even if you believe or don't believe, it's important for you to be able to understand where others are coming from and have empathy.
The most important thing a school board does?
Uh, after seeing the back of this, I agree that it's for the kids, but also what I see is you drive the success or the failure for this school. And that's through all the things that I talked about earlier, which are my credentials. You've got to have financial acumen. So Tracy scrutinizing the, uh, numbers and understanding where those are coming from and where they're going. For me as well, I'm a great forecaster, I'm a great budgeter. I've managed financials for the last fifteen years, and that's key. There's also the motivation in creating an environment where students and teachers can thrive. That's something where I'm also versed in. So you have to be able to ensure that you're creating rewards, disciplines, so that people understand where they stand and also how you can go to big them to do better. Um, and then there's the administrative pieces as well, too. You have to make decisions and judgments upon how you ensure that the school runs and runs successfully.
Your thoughts on our drug expulsion policy?
I agree that it has to be an objective rule that you can hold everyone accountable to, and I like that you can also work towards giving back because a lot of those students, unfortunately, they're impacted because of, for mentorship or guidance from their people in their lives. And so there needs to be a path where they can still be successful, but you do have to have that, uh, hard line and that objective stance.
Your experience on other service projects, boards, community involvement?
Uh, supported, I worked at the, um, on the board at the Northwest Arkansas Community College for the paralegals. Uh, I'm also kind of a member of the Watchdog Dads and helped coach the baseball team here locally as well.
And your personal strengths and weaknesses?
Uh, personal strengths would be just a strong passion and enthusiasm for anything that I do. I'm a relationship builder, I love to work well with others. And then, too, the pieces of just being able to bring financial acumen and, uh, guidance and developing environments where teachers and students can thrive. Um, weakness would be that I do get passionate, I do get, uh, I, I do want to work hard on the things that we want to achieve. So whenever they don't, uh, they're not achieved, I can often ruminate all those and get frustrated by it, but it just drives me to have passion to try and achieve the goals that are best for this community.
Thanks, sir. I believe we called eight, everyone in attendance that was going to speak, Kispok. I was back to your week. We got everyone on the list.
We're going to take a five, let's take a five-minute break so we can tell. Y'all put your votes down and then pass them in. We'll come back in five minutes.
You get five votes.
Five votes.
Five points.
Yeah.
Five bucks, five bucks. So if you wanted to go one, two, three, you could put one by each one.
Yeah, you get five votes.
Make sure y'all put Ken on the list, she wasn't on that. Ken? Ken. What's her resume?
So we were like rolling through, uh, we looked, and also one rolling through.
Chef? Huh? Is that Tim? Is that yours?
Yeah.
They're all in there. Sure. Hey. You're younger. Did he, did he reach the steering wheel? Do prior.
You look at that, you look at that steering, you wouldn't pay two hundred dollars for a sailboard.
Oh, no.
Oh no.
Hey Jay, you want this lease back? You want that lease?
To see nine applicants.
Yes, absolutely.
For a job that sometimes is thankless, honestly, it's not, it's not easy. When I came on board Heather was, told me, I talked to her and she's like, "It's the most wonderful, terrible headache thankless job that I love." And it's all true, it is all true. So thank you guys. It's not easy to make the decision.
No, it's just a testimony tonight of why Grabbits are Jim.
Exactly.
And I would say from a voting perspective, the votes are across the board. I get the unfortunate job of like making the motion, I guess. But they were across the board. Appreciate everybody. Let's do this, right?
Are you?
So I move that we approve and appoint Brandon Cravens to the open board position.
I second that.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Abes and favors, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, we appreciate it. Mr. Cravens, I assume Mr. Grabbit will be in touch to tell you what you need to do going forward. And I think that's it. With that, we're going to take executive session.
Hey, so everybody that came here tonight, next year
We have several positions.
There's an election, apply.
Yes.
Put in.
Yes, absolutely. Good thought Tracy, when you said that.
Go.
All right.
We're going to executive session, Megan.
Thank you.
For the purpose of discussing the following items, pursuant to the Arkansas Freedom of Information Act 93, as amended, employment and legal, no other items were discussed, nor votes were taken on any item. And we are personnel recommendations.
I move to approve the resignation of Sue Clark as GHS science teacher effective at the end of the 24-25 school year.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move to approve the resignation of Grace Jones as a GHS special education paraprofessional effective at the end of the 24-25 school year.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move to hire Joseph Dundon as a GHS AV tech communication teacher for 25-26 school year. He'll be on a working 190-day contract, step 16, with masters, earning an annual salary of 63,145.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move to approve the resignation of A.J. Airline as assistant cross-country track coach effective May 19, 2025.
Second.
Do we need this one, or can we just?
No, it's been superseded by the later motion.
Should we just take it off?
Oh, what about just adding it?
We just.
Yeah, as of Monday night, that was correct.
Can I rescind my second?
I rescind my motion.
No action.
I moved it through the resignation of A.J. Hairline as a Scrub School District head wrestling coach, GMS math teacher, and assistant cross-country track coach. The resignation will be effective at the end of the 24-25 school year.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Uh, we, that's nine H, maybe, what we just did. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move to hire Carly Johnson as our GHS science teacher for the 25-26 school year. Ms. Johnson will be working 190-day contract, step 4, earning an annual salary of 50,000.
Second.
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 Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh.
So that was up.
I got it, I got one more here. E.
Yeah, here you go.
I move to hire Drew Lindsey as GMS middle school science teacher as assistant wrestling coach for the 25-26 school year. Mr. Lindsey will be working 190-day contract, step 1, earning half salary, at 54,755.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to hire Matthew Chandler as our Grabit Middle School social studies teacher, assistant football coach, and assistant track coach for the 25-26 school year. Mr. Chandler will be working 190-day contracts, contract, step 19, earning an annual salary of 69,040.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to approve the resignation from Dusty Larson as a Grabit School District GUE, ALE teacher. This resignation will be effective at the end of the 24-25 school year.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move to approve the retirement of Barbara Hamilton as a Grabit School District, Grabit Upper elementary fifth grade teacher. This retirement will be effective at the end of the 24-25 school year.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move to approve the resignation from Reed Clary Robinson as a Grabit School District kindergarten teacher. This resignation will be effective at the end of the 24-25 school year.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to appoint the resolution to appoint Jeff Grabit to serve on the Northwest Arkansas Education Service Cooperative Board of Directors, representing the Grabit School District for a two-year term. Term will expire on June 30, 2027.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move to approve the addition of an eighth football coaching position and add a sixth track coaching position for the 25-26 school year.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
Is this the one we're going to talk about stockings instead of actual?
This is a clarification.
Clarification.
Just if we have hires to existing openings or future openings, we could have the option of adding coaching to it, but these are not full new positions. Just right now, we have an ALE position open, so if the ALE teacher is also softball, baseball coach, then that gives us a chance to add a coach to Coach Luther and Coach Call or?
No, this is the football. The draft.
Same, same thing on both is, it's just, it's not a.
They're not new, brand new positions.
Yeah, we have to make it work in the structure that we have.
Can, can we just go ahead and clarify for everyone why, because I'm, you know, why we need an eighth football coach and what the value would be?
Where, we've grown to a point at the middle school and the high school where the middle school schedule, when you get to eighth hour, you have so many coaches that are coaching on the high school staff that Coach Jones is limited in his class offerings at the end of the day, which is very challenging as he has, you know, 170 kids a grade now. High school, same thing, so there would be, you know, two, three, four football coaches that will join practice after the middle school day is ended because junior high is practicing in the morning already.
So it gives us the option for a hybrid split staff.
We'll grow into that and hopefully, you know, basketball is probably the next sport where that happens and it makes, you know, a district size period, just got four or 500 more students than us, they've kind of put through this transformation. Program would kind of be right there with us if they have eight football coaches now and it helps them within their middle schools, so. But still, we've got to find the right candidate that we can attach to a job that we need.
I think the most important thing is we're not just now tagging an eighth football coach. We're trying to create flexibility within the environment and if we find that flexibility, we'll use this stipend to do that.
Yep, yeah, it's just it allows Coach Fire and the principals to, as we're hiring candidates for positions this summer, if they have a coaching background, we'll get them. We probably won't be able to fill all of these, like we had an open volleyball slot this year that we never filled. We've had Coach Bohannon's been helping with baseball until we've had an extra baseball person. We haven't had that as much for softball, so. But it's, and part is just growth in the programs, you see how many kids we have participating.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to add an additional softball and baseball position for the 25-26 school year.
Second.
Same on this one.
Same deal.
Is, and will the, I guess my other question would be, like for these programs specifically, will that be dependent on numbers is my first question. And my second question is just, just to, I think it's fair to have this conversation because it's going on with kids right now, sports that we're cutting in, sports we're not cutting in. Are we adding coaches in the sports that we're cutting numbers out of? And is that, is the timing right, or is that what we should be doing? I think it's, it's worth having that conversation in this environment to be sure we're on the same page.
Well, I think that by adding these positions, I think that the, the cut for those sports should be not so much your cut, but you compete to make the roster instead of a plum out of the program for two reasons. One, they need to be involved in extracurricular. Number two, there are instances when young kids haven't matured, but you cut them out of a program, they'll never come back. Whereas if they're still there practicing every day, involved in the program, they may, him or her may be on dinner by their senior year and we want them in them programs. So by hiring this, I would, I would encourage not cutting from the program. I would, they compete for a weekly roster or. Let's just, and develop them, have that, have that extra coach to help develop those student athletes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, and I don't know if it's a perfect science on how we cut what we do, but I'm, I agree. I mean, I like being staffed in a way where we have enough flexibility to provide development opportunities. And that's to me is when we're expanding these coaching staffs, that's what we should be thinking about. Like, you know, numbers, we can keep it within control for your coach and assistant coach. If we're going to expand numbers, that's for development. And I don't know, and that's something we can probably debate because I know it's not a hard line. And yeah, I don't know that it should be up to one person to make that decision necessarily. Uh, because we're going to need to have some accountability and filters to be sure we're making the right decision, you know, for the kids.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move to adopt the math clerk, Coon, as presented on a three-year contract.
Second.
To be, I'm sorry.
No.
Me paid, paid for out of student group.
Motion is second. Where's, uh, I can't even see, is it okay if we have this in the same motion, probably?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So to be clear, that would be to purchase Eureka Math and Imagine IM on a three-year, according to three-year quote that was presented. Any discussion?
From a budgeting perspective for this stuff, how do we typically budget for this?
We have not had a good sustainable cycle on that. It's curriculum, furniture, our roads, some of these issues that have become more of an issue. That's as, we looked at what Dennis is projecting for next year, now we're getting on.
Budgeting for middle school math next year?
Yeah, we're sustaining that, like there needs to be, I don't know, 75 to 150 that's kind of available for those. In the past, we've had a lot of grants and we've had different years where there's been a lot of federal money available for things. Now we're somewhat dry on that front, but it's time, the Learns Act requires some of these adoptions going forward and there will be more on that, but we're here to educate kids and we should be adopting curriculum more regularly and. and we need to be on a cycle where that's what we're doing and we're engaging parents and our teachers in that. So this is the first, this is not, hey, we just fixed the math program, like, we're going to be doing other things with math and we'll come back on some of our other areas as well. But I'm proud of Ms. Andrews and the teachers for expediting this this year because that was one thing that we wanted to accomplish this school year.
And that's good, I, and don't get me wrong, I'm 100% behind progress here. Let's plan for it, you know, let's get a roadmap and let's, let's keep doing it, in my opinion. It's just a little bit, when we're, you know, we're going to pull it out of student growth and then potentially building funds, um, which, I know building fund might sound weird, but it's more like a savings account than it is.
I think we could have a specific.
Yeah, and, you know, as long as it's before the start of the year. The, the only time I change the budget, I might do a reallocation, but I'm not increasing the budget.
Yeah.
In 2000, it's all the same, unless, but there are a lot of times where the state makes us adjust the budget before they tweak the allocations during the year, then you guys will see some of that as revenues and expenses changing. If the state says, God, if it was this way, if they give it in before the budgets do, I can get it into student growth or any combination of that and building funds, so.
Well, there's that one line, that's 150,000. I mean.
Yeah, we spent a little bit of that, there's still a chunk there.
Yeah, but I mean, we hadn't done this in 10 years.
Yeah.
So, um, it's kind of new.
Yeah.
So I think that you're right, we need to budget for it.
I think it's exciting, I just, let's have strategy and let's keep rolling.
Next year, new science, I'd like new science and possibly health next year.
We did Health last year, not high school.
No, well, we did, uh, the high school.
I had to read that book and it was.
Like the actual health, the health classes, that's where the medical, I was like, so.
Okay, I digress. I blushed.
You sure did. It was a whole way she.
Starting to do now.
Well, now I'm embarrassed because everyone's read the book.
Come here, bud. Moving along.
Moving along. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move to approve the first reading of the SBA model policies.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? There's lots of new stuff in there that we can.
The whole legislative session is what you're seeing, so I would assume in our June 2 meeting that we want to have a broader discussion considering the late hour, but, you know, the cell phone policy, um, the board terms and board training, um, a lot of things about school choice, you see some clarification on discipline policies, um, continuation of discussion we had about AI. When we get to September, we'll have a lot of responsibilities for new things that have to be posted on the website publicly, um, but way, way too much after the first reading, so there's 400, it's right there, 400 pages that Megan's got in case there was a question tonight.
It takes a long time on those.
Yeah, so she did, she does, if you want the paper copy, because it does, it makes you click on each policy, so.
Do you have a file of those from where you printed that?
You print it each one?
It's on the draft.
I, I have the one ready for you.
The.
I'll.
Oh, I didn't see.
Yeah, I hate it 150. Did you say something about the required audio recordings, something that's in?
Yeah, that phases in in the following school year, so we probably won't be doing that this school year.
So, but for the second reading though, we'll. There's a lot of these things, we've got to start taking ands or ors or, you know what I mean, like, filling in the blanks. So what, are there three, are there three readings or two?
Yeah, so I'd say, I mean, it's a quick turnaround for June 2, but I'd say at June 16, we want to, if you guys can study between now and then, that would be the meeting to have the conversation on these.
Okay, is there two readings though, or is there three?
It's the second reading and in the next meeting.
So for the second reading, we need to have a good point of view, and you, you guys probably should too on.
Yep.
Where there's.
Well.
Where there's options in here, I said you can do this or you can do that, or whatever, you know, there's day, there's things we need to fill in the blanks on.
Through some of the snow days, Megan and I worked extensively on the policy manual and she's done a great job of breaking it out, and now, unfortunately, all these things are going to, I mean, somebody's got to type it in there and make it searchable and typically this needs to be pre-teacher contract and the, you know, teacher license policies, but last year, they gave them to us the night of the board meeting, like, June 17th, and we couldn't, if you remember all summer, we were trying to catch up. Now we should be right on it to where these are in policy in July when we publish them for the staff and all the students coming back. Most of them don't have an emergency clause, so they're law the 90 days after the governor signed them, so that's, you know, most of those are April, March, so we're talking July, August, so we've got time.
Motion is second, any, any more discussion? All those in favor, first reading of the policies, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Board comments?
Do we have the school choice applications?
Put that in consent agenda.
Did we bump it, all of them?
Yes. Yeah. Hey, board comment real quick because I know it's late, but I want to appreciate or tell all of our staff, great year, um, and I know it's been crazy these last few weeks and everything, so just a few more days, it's over, but thank you. And I also want to make, um, Grabbit Day's coming up and our grand marshal will be Ms. Susan Holland. I know she has so. So that was announced, it's not been publicly put out there yet, but. She has to act about herself now. Yes, the committee has voted and Susan Holland will be Grabbit Day.
I have to wait for somebody to interview me.
Yes, yes.
To me, that's supposed to happen sometime.
But anyway, much well deserved on that, too, and thank you to all those pool, um, that participate in the Grabbit Day, and that's August the 9th, it's always the second Saturday in August, so.
We have district day that Friday morning, the 8th, which we've already started preparations with the chamber, but some of those preparations also help prepare us for Grabbit Day as well. And that, you'll be introduced to a lot of new staff in the June board meetings, I just couldn't fit them in tonight, we had so many celebrations at the top, but we'll get those folks involved and invited to all those events as well.
Motion for the jurors.
Second. All those in favor say aye.